The military approach.
Okay.
Now we have two Davids to, uh, to address one. Welcome down Madison.
Well, we also have two Richards.
That's true.
All right. Oh. What happened there? Oh, you took off. Okay. Here we go. Uh, I am calling to order the September first, 2020 Lincoln City Planning Commission meeting. James, could we have roll call please?
Marcy Baker?
Here.
Kim Blackerby?
Yeah.
Josh Brainerd? Patty Crowen?
Here.
Lenny Nelson?
Here.
Miles Schlesinger?
Present.
Max Smith?
Here.
All right. So, uh, Josh is the only one that we're missing. Hopefully he's going to join us soon. Um, uh, you probably, you're all noticing that we have a, um, an individual in our group that we haven't seen before, David Madison. So, David, would you, um, like to take just a couple of minutes and introduce yourself?
Well, hello, I'm Dave Madison. I think I've talked to quite a few, well, a few of you over the phone, uh, planning commission members, and of course I know all of staff. I guess I just, I started here about, wow, about a month ago, month and a few days ago. And, uh, kind of getting everything in gear, learning everything and, uh, ready to work on the tree ordinance a little bit tonight and talk it over.
All right. Well, David, I appreciated you bothering to call and introducing yourself. I was quite pleased.
Thanks. I know I didn't, I know I didn't reach everybody and I apologize if I did catch you yet.
Yep. Thanks for the call.
Thank you. All right.
I appreciated getting to know David over the phone, uh, today. Or, uh, yes, last week rather.
Okay. Um, David, do we have any agenda changes or revisions?
I don't think so.
Okay. Um, we have the minutes from, um, our last regular planning commission meeting, which was way back, um, about six years ago. No, it was, uh, July 21st, 2020. So, um, James, I didn't, um, I didn't get, get a chance to call you, but I have just a couple of quick corrections in it. If I can give those to you. James, are you there?
You're muted, James.
Here it is.
There you go.
Sorry, I'm muted. Yeah.
That's okay. That's okay. Um, just a couple of them that, uh, you know, there's that make a difference in the, in this, in the, um, sentence. Under the final orders, resolutions and written communications, the discussion on the third line, um, you reference a black spot for the planning commission, and I think that's a blank spot. Not a black spot. Um, and, and then, um, the other one was just, um, double words on page, on the next page of the notes. Let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six full uh, paragraphs down. The, the paragraph starts Cher Crowe and and on the fourth line of that, it says would have, would have. So I think you just need to strike the, one of the would haves out of there. And then, um, the, the following page just before the block of 4.1.2, uh, the second line of that paragraph immediately above it, um, you reference Mr. Richard, um, which I think is Mr. Apicello. Mr. Richard. And I, I think, um, the rest of it is, is fine. That was a difficult meeting to transcribe, so I appreciate your efforts on it, James. So do I have any?
I got those down and I'll make those changes.
I, uh, I noticed one as well on, I think it's page six, six, three dot one. Uh, first paragraph, it says Commissioner Blackerby asked my Apicello.
Oh, there you go.
Mr. I saw these too, but.
We're, we're quite possessive of Mr. Apicello, so.
In other words, that was a long meeting, so thank you for the detail.
It was. It was. All right. Any other corrections to the minutes for that meeting? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept or to adopt the minutes from the July 21st regular meeting?
Don't move.
Thank you, Lenny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thanks, Kim. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Minutes are adopted. Thank you. Um, we do not have any final orders, resolutions and written communications, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. No public hearings or deliberations tonight. No old business. So now we're down to uh, the new business, which is, um, identified as revisiting the approach to revising the tree ordinance. And just, um, to provide a, a reminder of where we were uh, going with this, um, a number of meetings ago, we talked about the need to, i- in fact, I think even longer than that, maybe a year and a half ago, was when we initially talked about looking at the tree ordinance and making some changes to it. And, and the effort didn't really get off the ground. And then, uh, a few meetings ago, um, we initiated a smaller subcommittee to, um, to look at revising the tree ordinance and, and doing some, some work on that, uh, in that regard. Um, at that time, we were, uh, going through some changes. I think that was when, um, Anne Marie was leaving and then, um, then we all sort of went to this virtual format and uh, I know there was some effort put in to establish a meeting with, um, with James, uh, trying to identify a date because we understand that we have the public um, meeting rules to follow even as a, a subgroup of the planning commission. So for, for all of those things going on, we never did get a meeting of the subcommittee off the ground. So now it's back um, to the planning commission and I guess we're gonna, gonna hit, um, reboot and start again and, um, figure out how to best approach revisiting our, uh, tree ordinance. I, I know there was also a discussion and I'm not sure if it went to everyone, but I know, um, um, Mr. Apicello mentioned that, uh, we probably should be looking at this ordinance in concert with revising, um, the comp plan and making sure that it's consistent with that. Um, but I think that if we, um, we recognize that we do need to stay um, kind of in lockstep with that and not do, not do anything in the, in the tree ordinance that would be in conflict with a comp plan, even a revision of the comp plan, we should be okay. So, um, I guess what I'd like to hear from, um, particularly the people who were identified as on that um, tree ordinance committee, uh, what your thoughts are in terms of um, keeping, either keeping it as a, um, subgroup or turning it into a full planning commission um, discussion and more of a work session approach to, um, examining the, the tree ordinance and making any changes we think are important. So thoughts? Um, Kim, you want to start since, um, you are the de facto chair of that committee?
De facto chair of the committee that never met.
Right.
Uh, mostly due to, uh, to, um, my personal situations, but, um, I, I think it'd be, I think it'd be worthwhile also hearing because I, I had a good, uh, informative conversation with Ms. Rep. Chell um, about, uh, the feelings on that. And I, I've learned over my life and career that, that, uh, take faith in, 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 uh, legal corporate attorneys as to, to their, uh, opinions on how things should proceed. So, I learned a lot from that call and I, I think it'd be worthwhile hearing from, uh, Mr. Apicello in terms of his recommendations, in terms of committing, ke- keeping this as a, a, a working item of the whole, of the whole, uh, commission.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Apicello, can you, um, illuminate the topic for us?
My recommend, my recommendation was that you not do it as a subcommittee. Um, I just think it, my experience been difficult for the rest of the uh, commission to catch up with what the subcommittee does and, um, they, I, you have to comply with public meetings law, so you're really not saving any effort. So I would recommend you not do it as a subcommittee. I, and I, I go back to, uh, what exactly are we trying to do? You know, I know that Mr. Townsend can back me up on this. Uh, several years ago, we had a, um, amendment come forward that failed at the city council level to, uh, tweak the, uh, tree ordinance to get the, uh, requirement or add some flexibility to the requirement for the, the tree survey. So, um, I know that, that, uh, doing this is not going to be easy. Uh, so the council came split over whether or not to make it easier or make it harder to, uh, develop as it comes to trees. So, um, I think you need to talk about what direction you're going, going, and that's where I've recommended you first look at your comp plan and what, what is your goal? Uh, some people would say the goal is to make it easier for people to develop. Other people are going to say, well, no, we should protect more trees. And so you're going to start with that divide. Uh, you probably ought to figure out where we're, where we're going to start here.
Madam Chair?
Yes, David?
If I may, but in, um, we also, I just want to remind everybody, we also had a letter from, uh, Mr. Huckabee. Uh, was that about a year ago or around, or a few months ago? Uh, requesting some topping of trees and loosening of the, loosening of the tree ordinance. Um, and so I know that was, that was what I, what I viewed as spring, this, this, uh, this, um, reassessment of the tree ordinance on, um, but I think that may be another thing we want to think about. Um, I know tree topping is a no-no in almost everybody's, everybody's language, uh, on trees for preservation and, and health of the tree. Um, but I think if, I guess that kind of, uh, as Ms., as, uh, Mr. Apicello was stating, it, where do we want to go? Do we want to make them stricter? Uh, the code stricter? Do we want to clear some confusion up? Um, because I know I've, I've heard from some people about some confusion they've had with the tree ordinance. Um, or do we want to loosen it up to allow for a little more flexibility? So.
Okay.
And can you identify who, I don't remember a letter from this, Mr. Huckabee. Who is, who is he?
Mr. Huckabee is the owner of, oh, let me, it's, uh, RV Park on the north side of town. Is that correct, Richard Townsend?
The Lincoln Show.
What?
Lincoln Estates Development.
Okay. Yeah. Um, by the casino there.
Right. And he wanted to, he has a request, he's made a request a couple of times to top some trees uh, for concerns of them getting in the way of, um, some coverage he has on, um, in his, uh, in his camp, in his resort.
Is it a, is it a view shed issue?
I don't know if it was much of a view shed issue as it was just, uh, something so that they could have clear reception from a tower or from, um, some satellite. I, I didn't, I didn't understa-, I don't, I didn't understand how, what, what the exact reason was be- beside he wanted to try to obtain some better services.
Okay.
Does anyone else have some questions?
But the trees are not on his property? Is that the issue?
I believe they are on his property.
Okay, Ron?
Yeah. Um, Mr. Huckabee, uh, approached the city, um, almost a year ago now. And, uh, part of it, and it dealt with, uh, trees that were on, um, vacant lots. And the desire that they have, they have a homeowners association and the desire that they have to, uh, to keep those at a certain height. Um, 20 feet. Some trees and part, and a good part of that is for the view shed. Many of the trees in a couple of vacant lots have now exceeded that height. They changed their, um, they changed their, uh, their, um, their covenants, their covenants to allow this. And so then, so this is what they said of the city council, and this is why it's come, this part of it at least has come to you. Um, "We are requesting that the city council approve a change in this law to allow the removal of any tree over 20 feet in 20 feet high and replace them with trees or shrubbery that will not grow over the height of 20 feet. There are many native trees available for purchase that would not grow over the height of 20 feet and would satisfy this law. If the city council will approve this request, uh, um, we are required to change our CCNRs, which will uh, take the approval of vote of 75% of the association. Once we have approval from our association, we would then require any homeowner to remove the trees over 20 feet and replace them immediately." So that's, uh, so that's their desire. Um, the conflict they ran into is that our ordinance has restrictions on topping trees. If they get, or cutting trees down if they get above a certain height.
Right. So Ron, what, why did, if they have CCNRs, um, do our, can't they put that in their CCNRs without a change in our ordinance? Or does our ordinance supersede their CCNRs?
I think I will ask our attorney to answer that. I think I know the question, but always smart to tip my hat to the legal guy.
Yeah, the, uh, obviously our code is unaffected by private land use constraints. So CCNRs don't have any effect on our ordinance. Uh, CCNRs can be more restrictive than our ordinance, but they cannot grant relief from our ordinance. They are private land use constraints.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So that, so, uh, Madam Chair, that is the genesis of this, uh, um, of this whole discussion was Mr. Huckabee's original approach where he met with me and, uh, and the mayor.
Okay. And I, a- as I understand our tree ordinance in, um, in most of the zoning besides commercials, so multifamily or single family or attached single family, you're, you can remove trees on your property or you can remove trees in coordination with the owner of an adjacent property. So it, what it sounds to me like is the people who own these vacant lots are not interested in cutting the trees because I, as I read our tree ordinance as it stands now, if they got approval or concurrence from the owners of that lot, they could cut them down, right? I mean, not top them, but actually remove them. Yeah, Richard?
If they're within a hundred feet of the house that's affected, has their view affected with the permission of the adjacent property owner, they can remove the trees. Um, I know this has come up in the past well before I retired. The issue was then was the adjacent property owner would not grant permission. Um, I don't know what's changed. It could be the property owner has changed, but, uh, last I was aware of, of it, there was, uh, there was no consent coming from adjacent property owner.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Lenny.
Okay. Uh, I was on that subcommittee. First, the first thing I want to make is I have no problem with it going back to the full planning commission if that's the most logical and, and legal way to do it. But what I have a concern about was what just, what came up in that meeting that we had, whenever we last had a meeting, where the way the, um, owner of that subdivision was going to work, he wasn't going to leave any trees at all of any kind of that property. And, and I also commented to you that there's a new property being developed at 36th and Highway 101, where they didn't leave any living thing on that property at all. Now, on that one, it's so small that I don't think they could have logically done that. But that's the most common way they develop around here is they just get in with a, with a bulldozer and bulldoze everything out of their way. And that's where I want to see our tree ordinance prohibit that, to use some logic, uh, and some compromises that might help us continue to have the forested aspect that the city has without, um, without keeping the developers from being able to, I'm looking for that compromise place.
Yeah, yeah. And I, your points are well taken, Lenny. Those were, on that lot you're talking about, those were enormous trees that were taken down along the street side.
I was going to bring that one up too, and there's not a stick left there, I don't think.
Yeah. No, there isn't. So, um, I, I think, you know, one of the things that, um, over a year ago, when this first came up was um, that the tree ordinance is somewhat confusing. There's some contradictions in it, or it's difficult to follow. And there was a desire to maybe go in and, and simplify it. But I think the other thing that spurred at least my interest in revisiting the tree ordinance was, um, some of the results that we saw from the visioning process and, um, the number of comments that people made about um, the trees in Lincoln City and their desire not to see them cut down and not to see them lost. And, and so I, I think that also was something that we wanted to revisit this so that we could make very clear the intent and what we were striving for here in terms of the value of the trees, not just, um, not just for the, the obvious, you know, the soil erosion, but the aesthetics and the importance to the tourists who come here and see this as a sort of forest to the sea, um, location. And, um, and the fact that once they're gone, they're gone. So we talked about um, being a little clearer on, um, significant trees or trees of importance and identifying where they should, where we should, um, try to protect those. And also, um, to make sure that the decision to take out the trees or clear cut, for example, in the, the, um, the development that you just mentioned, Lenny, on 101, is not simply a cost um, decision, that that's not the only thing that bears, um, significance when you decide to tear out all the trees. So, um, I, I, I still think that there's value in us, um, approaching this and trying to figure out a more reasonable, um, a more reasonable tree ordinance that takes all those things into consideration. Um, just reading through the one that was provided, uh, it is a little bit confusing and, um, and I, and I think that we could do a better job, uh, at it. In, in terms of tightening up some of the, some of the approval processes and such, so. Yes, Kim?
I just want to, uh, add to your comments. We talk about the, the image of the city and, and as the city goes forward with whatever may happen with the, the villages at Sitka Woods, I think is the correct name for it right now. Um, if, if those, that area were to be cleared as it seems lots are cleared, uh, then there's a whole nother section of town that, that will end up looking like, in my opinion, Olivia Beach, where there's just no trees left down there, uh, at least on, on residential neighborhoods. And so I, I, I think we owe it to the long-term image of the city to, to address this. And, and my second point is that I just looked through this ordinance and I can see so many instances, at least in my opinion, and I don't know what I don't know, where it's, doesn't seem to be enforced. And I know that's not our issue to, to drive enforcement, but I think we can raise attention to it.
I, I, I agree. And I, and I think we need to, to have a clear path to enforcement. And, and I don't think it, it can simply be pay a fine because, um, we'll lose every tree in the city if all it takes is, is a, a payment in lieu of um, saving a tree. And, and you're right, that, the Sitka Woods area, um, has a lot of Sitkas, has a lot of significant trees that um, are quite old and they're not diseased and they're not falling down. They are um, extraordinary examples of that tree that should stay. So, um, yeah, I think timeliness, um, it is important for us to get this right and to get it, get it done. Um, Miles, I know you're, you are also on that, um, committee. Do you want to add any thoughts to the approach?
I think it's very important that we go ahead and I think it is an improvement to, uh, include all of the planning commission rather than, uh, the three who are interested. I'd like to see certain areas preserved that, uh, are on public property now and that can easily, uh, have development, but sound development, uh, practices saving, uh, particular trees if necessary. So, I'm for moving forward.
Okay. I, I know that you requested, um, I believe from Kathy Steer, I believe you requested the background information on the existing tree ordinance and also any previous ordinances. Did you ever receive that?
I wanted to see what, uh, we had done over the, since the city was, uh, founded. Uh, Mr. Apicello thought it was too much to do on a limited, uh, staffing. I'd still like to see that and I'd like to see it mixed with the landscaping requirements. And I think Richard Townsend, if he could give me an hour would have a conversation on the history of landscaping, uh, requirements in the general city and such would give me a uh, better perspective over, uh, over, uh, trees and landscaping.
I'll be happy to talk to you.
Are you ever in the office, uh, now that the office is closed?
Um, I'm rarely in the office, but we can, we can talk over the phone or whatever, or we can maybe set something up to be in the office.
I think we all would like to hear his thoughts on that. So maybe it's just a presentation from you to, to the commission.
Yeah.
Um, I can talk over the phone also and, uh, would be happy at your convenience to do so.
Well, I, I think, Miles, what, what Kim is suggesting is probably a good idea, that it would be helpful if we're going to expand this committee to be the entire planning commission, then we all should hear um, that background information so that we're all on the same page. And so I.
That's fine, uh, too. I just think it's important to understand where we've been as a city before planning for the future.
Sure.
So, uh, I'd like to suggest then a work session where we could uh, talk about this and perhaps other, uh, items on, uh, and so we could get an idea. And Zoom meeting is, uh, fine.
Yeah. Richard?
Yeah, we can, um, the next meeting, there's really nothing, there's no hearings or anything scheduled to, uh, uh, David and I can. uh, David and I can prepare and, and talk to you. Do you basically continue this meeting tonight, you know, this, this effort into the next meeting?
Yeah, I, I think that's a, a good idea. And I, I also would like us to um, figure out a way to interface with, help me with the name, Kim, is it Crouch? The individual who's on the city staff now, who was um, instrumental in developing the tree ordinance for Portland?
Correct, yeah.
I think he serves on a uh, uh, com- uh, committee for the Parks and Recreation Department uh, as a volunteer.
Do you know him, Richard?
No, I don't, but I, I'll find out.
All right.
Jenny Spray knows him, I'm, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, so if, if for our next meeting, we could have, you know, a, a work session in earnest on this topic and um, everybody sort of bring in their, their thoughts. Once you have an opportunity, I know we didn't, you know, the packet, I, maybe I'm the only one that didn't have a lot of time to put some thought into what I want to see in the tree ordinance, but I think by our next meeting, we all should be able to uh, come in with some real um, you know, concrete thoughts of what we'd like to, maybe concrete's not a good choice of terms for trees, but um, you know, some thoughts of, of where we want to go with the, with the tree ordinance. David?
So three things I've captured out of what we've discussed today are preservation of existing trees. Uh, we want to look at that as much as we can. We want to look at enforcement for illegal removal of trees. And then there was also a little discussion there on possibly integrating with the landscape requirements, or I was considering that more of a replanting for a new generation of trees. Um, does that sound like what everyone has kind of been uh, jumping around with tonight?
Yeah, I, I think so. I, you know, the integration with the landscaping has its own rabbit holes we could go down, but um, but there is, you know, in the tree, um, in the current tree ordinance, there, you know, there is substantial discussion in it about um, mitigation trees and about replacement trees and and I, you know, I don't know if that means we need to just reference back and forth to the landscape section or how, how best to do that. I'm gonna, I'm going to depend on, on you code writing folks to to help understand what would be the most efficient. I know, you know, we've gone through quite a bit of revision in the last few months to make it easier um, for people to, to meet the requirements. And, and I, you know, when you look at tree removal and tree protection, I think we should be looking at it through the eyes of of a developer or a homeowner or whoever is going to need to meet the requirements in that section. So to the extent we can tighten it up, um, make it so there's no, no ambiguity in it and um, you know, an, an ordinary person without a law degree can, can um, find their way through it and understand what they can and can't do. I think that's, that's the other sort of overarching goal. And to link it to, as I said before, to kind of link it to a, to the visioning um, process that we did, which was actually done um, to, to help inform our comp plan revision as far as what the city um, residents and visitors and tourists and business owners wanted to see the city look like in 25 years. And, you know, there's a lot of um, a lot of squishy language in it, but if you go back to the raw data and look at the comments, I think there's a lot of good information in there about what people's perspective is on um, trees and, and the city in general, and we should be taking a look at that. And there's new data that suggests the significance of, of trees um, from a habitat perspective and also the relationships of trees to each other, which um, we should be cognizant of as well, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Lenny?
I was on the planning commission when we did the original Villages at Cascade Head. One of the things we did for that was to work very hard with environmentalists and arborists, other people, to come up with a tree plan for that development that tried to balance the needs of the developer in that case and the need to retain the kind of aesthetics that Lincoln City already has. I don't know if that, if that's in a digital form at all anymore, Richard? At all?
Um, I don't think it is, but uh, we can easily scan, scan those conditions of approval in. I just made a note to, to do that, so uh, I think we can get that available.
If we can share that, because that, we worked very, very hard and very, very long to try to reach a compromise that had some substance behind it.
Who's your face? One of the... One of the nice things about the villages situation now is that except for 40 acres, we own it. So uh, if and when, you know, as we sell parts of it off, we can put whatever restrictions on we want. Which is, so uh, the, the clear cutting isn't so much of an issue there, I don't think, as it might be in other parts of the city.
Hmm, well, yeah. And, and I, I agree, the holistic approach is good if we have control like that. I, that's one of the um, that's one of the difficulties in the existing tree um, ordinance though, is that um, developing on tricky parcels of land um, can require a significant amount of cut and fill um, prior to any building permit being uh, put forward. And as it currently stands, those tree removal plans are linked to a building permit. And when you go in to put the infrastructure in, you're pretty much justified in removing whatever you need to in order to install that infrastructure. And that's one of the one of the spots where we had, you know, quite a bit of discussion on one of our previous issues that came before us. So, you know, we, we need to kind of tighten that part up as well.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's some, that's probably the chief area where I see ambiguity in the, in the ordinance that needs some tightening.
Yeah, okay.
In the city of Eugene and this, uh, there are a few other cities, Ashland and a few cities like that have some pretty strong um, tree ordinances for preservation of trees as well. So I can, you can try to pull some of that up as well.
That would be, that'd be terrific.
One from uh, um, Cannon Beach.
Yes. They also have some great program.
So that would be great. If, if you can um, if you can kind of do a little bit of research in that and integrate that into a presentation to us at the next meeting, that would be really helpful. And to the extent any of that material can be provided in advance of the meeting so that those of us that process information slower than others can have an opportunity to, to read it in advance, that would be terrific.
Okay.
So, yes, Kim?
Um, I did, since Lenny brought up the, the issue of this development on 36th and 101, um, Na- David, maybe you can research this for us. There was, I should have to be at this point in time, May or so, there was a, uh, an agenda item that was on the, on the agenda that was withdrawn, that I think was related to that property. And I would just be interested if that were true as to why it was brought before the committee and withdrawn, and then all of a sudden development starts happening there. And I may be wrong and it was a different development, but I seem to think it was.
Okay, I'll look that up.
Thank you.
David, you might want to add to your list that I think the the section we're talking about, uh, infrastructure development, that's 9A2 in the packet on packet page 15. And the, the question I have, what, what looks confusing is it final approval of the engineer and there, but there's also another section that says it's, the permit is supposed to be concurrently processed with subdivision. So that to me makes you wonder who's making the decision. Is it the planning commission? The engineer? So I think that's one of the issues we need, or not just, you know, I know we, I think we've been handling it as a condition of approval, but I, I think we should address it.
Good point. Good point. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you, Richard. All right, any other, any other thoughts on the tree ordinance approach? So we'll basically um, review the existing one and any other um, information that's provided by planning staff in advance of our next meeting. And at that meeting, um, if we don't have anything else on the agenda, we can really focus the entire meeting essentially on this topic and use that time as a work session. So bring forward your, your thoughts on it. Any comments on that? Yes, Richard?
If anybody has any, any concerns right now that uh, you know, to point out like uh, you know, like uh, Mr. Apicello has just pointed out, if there's any others that would help us to prepare, or if you don't have it right now, if over the next few days, if you have things that you want us to look at, that would be helpful to know.
Okay. So if you have any now, and if not, if you can let them know in the next few days, I think that would be helpful to put, put together their uh, I'm, I'm just trying to quickly look through mine. Um, Mr. Apicello, what is a Class B violation?
Uh, under our code, it's a maximum $1,000 fine. I think the minimum fine might be $135, uh, but I could be wrong. It could, I don't have that section in front of me.
Okay, thank you. And the other, the only other question I have is that there's a a section at the end, the very end of the ordinance, um, that talks about a tree board. Do we have a tree board?
No.
Go ahead.
We don't have a tree board, um, as far as I know. It, it, this uh, board didn't make it into chapter two when we did that a couple of years back. Uh, so we don't currently have one.
Yeah, I, I, as I recall, the council, when we first adopted this, may have been thinking about uh, if they don't appoint a specific tree board, that maybe the planning commission can handle that responsibility, but I don't remember whether they actually adopted anything on that or not.
Okay, so that...
On that.
Yeah, that last section L, starting on page, packet page 23 to the end, um, talks about the establishment of the tree board, so it'd be nice to know if that didn't happen. If it could or...
One of the recommendations, one of your recommendations should be to either strike that or, or add it to chapter two or uh, maybe as Richard suggested, we have the planning commission serve as the tree board in the event we don't have an appointed tree board.
Okay. All right, Marcy, comment?
Well, something I noticed about the tree board is you were mentioning, you know, this tree ordinance is pretty hard to understand and there's a lot of, you know, you can't do this unless this, but this, and it gets a little messy. I think that it's interesting, it says the tree board was supposed to write a tree manual, but essentially make it easier to understand. And, and I was kind of thinking, you know, the same thing of, well, if we don't have one, could it say like, in the event there isn't a tree board, the planning commission can do it, or just maybe, I don't know if that's something city staff, like, it seems like a tree manual would be useful, but then if it's an understandable ordinance, it might not be necessary. So I, I thought that was kind of a curious thing. But if it was there, it would probably help a lot with interpreting the ordinance we have.
And, and maybe that's an end product that'll come out of this work session that we have.
I think that would probably be a really productive thing to get.
Yeah, we, we have a similar provision in the, the uh, building code, I think it's called Building Code Board of Appeals. I don't remember now, but um, it's idea is the same that, you know, building code appeals are complicated, requires some expertise, so this board was supposed to have a plumber, an electrician, and a contractor and um, and never have uh, people for that board. And so the code was amended a couple of years ago to say we can designate a hearings officer um, who has experience in those areas if, if that board doesn't have a quorum. So um, we could do something, one of the alternatives could be to do something that here, you'd have an arborist who could be, act as a hearings officer or something like that. Uh, wouldn't have to be an arborist, it could be an attorney or someone else that has this experience.
Yeah. It'd be nice for them to have a manual to follow as well, I would think. But, okay. Um, other comments on this? Okay, all right. So I look forward to that for next, uh, next meeting. Um, any planning commission training?
No.
Nope.
So, uh, I may add, pipe in here. I have talked to Lisa Phipps with the state and she has um, she's been very generous in providing training to a lot of small communities. And she would be willing to come down uh, and, and do a training session for um, for our planning commission. Uh, if you're interested in maybe just establishing, giving a few options for dates for her to come down, um, that would be something I think she would love to do. She's great at doing it and I, she's a great speaker and really good at taking questions and helping people.
And, and what, what kind of topics would she focus on, David?
She can focus on the role of the planning commission. She can focus on planning, the history of planning in the states, um, a lot of different, a lot of variety of subjects.
Would that be similar to uh, the one that you attended with uh, um, someone, I think, the last planning commission chairman, Steve Griffith, and I, and you went to Eugene?
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Josh, I went to Bend and it, it sounds like that. Which is really interesting, and I think, you know, if we're looking at even in the next year, redoing the comp plan with, you know, this commission we have, it'd be really beneficial, I think, to kind of have a refresher on the background of how Oregon uniquely kind of handles planning.
Yeah, that, I mean, if, if it were a focused discussion on something that we are approaching, for example, as Marcy said, a, a comp plan review, I think that would be helpful. I think most of us, I, Kim maybe hasn't, um, and I'm not sure if Josh has or not, but I think most of us have gone to those um, day-long um, sessions put on by the state at various points. So I, I hate to have her come down and, and just do a, a general presentation that most of us have heard, but a specific topic um, that we're, you know, getting ready to sink our teeth in, I think could be really valuable.
Okay, okay. All right, and does anyone have any ideas for, for dates? Would you like to discuss that? October, um...
How, how would this meeting be presented? On Zoom or uh, get together?
It would be on Zoom, um, the same as we're, we're doing now.
Yeah.
Unless by that time, everything is cleared up, so we can, can't have socially distant meetings.
So what is the timeframe you're talking about, David? How long would, would the presentation be?
They can take uh, two hours, one hour, um, she, she can be very succinct. She can, I think the good thing would be to really answer a lot of questions. Um, because I think she's very good at that. Um, rela- and relating it specifically to the comp plan and to, and changing and updating the comp plan, I think she could really uh, help us with learning our role and how, how we go about doing that.
And the other question is, is there a cost associated with this?
No, it's free.
Okay.
It's from the state.
Lenny?
Well, yeah, I, I was gonna say, if we're gonna look at doing our comp plan fairly soon, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have somebody who's knowledgeable talk to us about state, state land use goals, because that's what drives our comp plan, our, our commitment to meet those goals. And I think they've changed over the last few years. There've been some revisions to those state goals. So even, they look a little different than when I was originally. So they look a little different than when I was originally looking at them. So I'd be interested in hearing that question.
Okay. I'm, I'm not sure, ready to, to commit to a specific date yet, David, but I think maybe at our next meeting, we can look at future meetings and see what might make sense.
Why don't I present, just if she has some options for dates, why don't I, I present those to you at the next meeting?
That sounds great. Thank you.
And if we're gonna do this on Zoom, she doesn't have to travel anywhere.
True.
That's the thing about the internet, it's worldwide.
Her bookcase. Okay, any reports and comments?
Lenny, Madam Chair?
Yes, Kim?
I just, I just had a, a, really two questions and, and maybe this is for David and to Richard Townsend. In the prior meetings, we had asked for updates to prior decisions we had made, like if votes we had made had gone to council, what ended up happening, if we don't happen to see the council meeting or things like that. So just a reminder that we've requested that, and if there are future council decisions that affect items that we referred to them, then that would be great to have.
Okay, yeah, good reminder. Richard?
I could tell you that the appeal of the decision on Cove, Cove 3, being heard on the September 21st, and I think that's what I can talk about. I think, Richard Appicello, you know, the dates for some ordinances?
The ordinances on the procedures and the signs will be going on the 14th. The continued annexation request is going to the city council with a development agreement on the 28th.
September?
That's, yes.
I'm sorry, but Mr. Appicello is breaking up. I didn't catch the last thing the council was gonna do.
The consideration of the annexation.
Yes, the annexation with a development agreement will be heard on the 28th.
And if you'll remind me, I think that's the one we rejected, and then the appeal, the appeal is going to the council?
No, you, you made a recommendation. I don't recall, but I actually think that you actually had a split vote and it was recommended by the planning commission. But I don't, don't hold me to that, I don't remember, I haven't looked at it for a while, but.
That was a four to three vote.
The applicant requested a continuance. Yeah, so it was, it was a split vote, I don't remember which.
I believe we voted yes on annexation and then no.
You're basically.
Yeah, I think that's true.
I think that's right.
That's how it went.
The one off Logan Road.
Right, right. And then it went to our recommendation.
The applicant has added.
And then it was continued, and now it's coming back up. But the piece that I didn't realize is, so now there is a development agreement, a negotiated agreement?
Yeah. There, the applicant has proposed a development agreement, that's to be considered by the city council.
Okay, thank you.
I had one other item.
Yes, Kim?
This is for Mr. Chandler, I don't know if there's any update on recruitment for a new director of planning?
Yes, there is. We have hired Proftman and Associates to help us in that search. They are moving forward with that, they're developing the, the material that they will begin to send out, I believe it's the first of next week that they start sending that out. And, and so that's where we sit. I don't remember the, how much time it is that they'll be, that they'll be accept, accepting applications, but I'll send you and I'll let you know all the details.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so I only have one comment to make on future agenda items in next meetings. And this is something that I've been kind of kicking around in my head, and I did actually mention it to, to David when we, when we chatted. We are obviously going to be doing the comp plan at some point. We don't know when, but we're hopeful that it'll be soon. But in the meantime, there are things I think that we could do to get prepared for, for moving forward and identifying those areas of the comp plan that we do want to, to focus on and address. And I think the way that we can start doing that is by inviting the public in to talk about their, their various parts of town. And so what I was thinking was, it would be nice to set aside a couple, maybe a couple of hours at each of three meetings and one for each ward, so that we could invite the public to provide us with input on what's going well in their ward, what's not going well in their ward, what they would like to see changed, what challenges they have, things that would help guide us in identifying those areas where we want to focus and areas that would be assisting us in the comp plan. Public involvement can be really expensive, but if we, if we kind of get smart about it and invite people to participate in meetings along the way, and Zoom meetings can work that way, we can get input. And then we can dovetail that input with what we received on the, in the visioning process and, and really have a little better idea of how to approach the issues that people deal with on a daily basis in the city. The added benefit is it would introduce David to the various parts of the city, what's going on in them. And I will admit, I, I don't know what parking is like in Cutler City, for example, I mean, I know what's going on in Rhodes Inn, but I think it would be helpful for all of us to sort of step back from our individual neighborhoods and understand the challenges of the rest of the city so that we can approach it. And it would introduce David to the three wards, and when a new planning director comes on board, they can watch the video. They can, they can learn about it too. So I suggested this, I chatted with Ron a little bit this afternoon and suggested it to him, and he is going to chat with the planning staff about this, I think this week, tomorrow maybe? Okay, and, and see about how, how we might be able to structure this. So I just wanted to kind of give you guys a heads up that it's something I think would be helpful to us. So, comments?
I think that sounds like a, a great idea, and I don't know if we have other items coming down the pike that, that are, are there, but it seems like we have an opportunity to do that now, since we may not have other things going on.
Yeah.
Wish we did.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, though. We've got a lull here, we might as well use it.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. And to kind of have three different meetings and kind of set that time aside, because, you know, you know, if we get the public to really get involved, it, it'll be pretty time consuming. I like that idea, kind of doing it one, one ward each time and.
Yeah.
People feel favors.
We don't have to, we don't have to block people, I mean, if they watch one of the meetings and they, you know, get a great idea at three in the morning, or standing in the shower, or whatever, that they would be able to provide that information as well at a, at a later date. So it's, it's all about collecting, collecting input.
One suggestion I would make, though, is if we define, I don't think the vast majority of people understand, you know, what a comp plan is, so maybe it's define, you know, what we would be looking for, what, rather than just opening up, you know, I need a stop sign at the corner of X and Z, you know?
Yeah, or, or not. I mean, because if somebody comes in and says they need a stop sign at X, then, you know, that's an indication that we need to look at the traffic and the circulation, you know? So, all right, great, well, we can refine this as we move forward. All right, any other comments? Yes, Marcy?
Maybe, you know, whenever we're putting that information out for the public, to, if we could somehow link to that visioning work that was done a few years ago, which would kind of give people a place to start and look at and, and kind of see what we're already gonna be considering. You know, if there's anything that's changed since then that they're like, oh, you know, this says this and now we don't like that, or I love this part, I think it'd be a good, good place to go from.
Good idea. I think the number one thing that came out of the visioning was food trucks, so, and I think we're still working on food trucks. All right, other comments?
We have a food truck site plan review meeting a week from today, so the wish could be fulfilled soon.
Where is the location, Richard?
Actually, this one is in Taft, on the side of the, where the pines used to be. And actually, there's another one proposed up behind the, it's the Blue Agave. It's not as far along, but, but this one is, they're ready for site plan, they've got some nice plans, and actually, the, the plans are on, online, I believe, take a look at them.
Excellent.
James is shaking his head, yes.
All right, yay, we're moving forward.
So the vision becomes reality.
We're gonna, we're gonna be just like Portland in 2000, or whenever their food trucks went into service.
Wrong answer.
All right, any, anything else, for the good of the order? Okay, thank you all for participating, we'll figure out what happened to Josh, and we are adjourned.
Have a good week, everyone.
Thank you, you too.
All right.